I want to mention, as we did last week, that next month, and I can say it's next month because it's October 1st today, if you can believe it, next month, November 14th at 10:00 a.m., will be the annual Crop Walk. And this stands for Communities Responding to Overcome Poverty. And that will start over in Gil and Michelle's neck of the woods, in Bloomington Hills, at the Lark Spur Park. And it's a six-mile walk, which, and there, you know, the fees that are donated there go towards helping to overcome hunger, as I said before. This is done by the Interfaith Council. And I think it's a wonderful project. It goes to help people right here in our community, and sometimes, if enough funds are raised, elsewhere. Right?
I am, and I'm sure we'll have several council members there, too. So, look forward to that. You're exactly right. It's hunger both abroad and abroad.
Very good. And we appreciate so many efforts by a number of the faith groups and to help people who are in need. And that's part of, I think, the success of our community is, hopefully, no poor among us. Marathon. And so, what can we say? Konnichiwa? Yeah? That's about it. This morning, we could've said Ohio. But anyway, I would like to have Gary Sanders come forward, if he would, and provide just some initial remarks about how this works and what's going on. And then, I'd like, why don't James, why don't you come up at the same time? Come up now. James McFadden from the Exchange Club. I'd like him to say a few words when Gary's finished, and then we'll go from there. Gary?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor and councilman, as you know, this is a relationship that's been going on for 27 years now, that we've had this exchange with this town of Ibigawa. It's up in a small area, up in the Gifu Prefecture of Japan. It's a beautiful place, for those of you that have had an opportunity to visit there, representing the city. But I know that Mayor Somiya, this year, extends his apologies for him not being able to be here, nor any of their city council. And next week, they have a big festival in their community to celebrate the forests and the trees. And the Crown Prince of Japan is going to be visiting them. And he only goes to about one prefecture each year. And so, it's really an honor for them. And so, they're really working diligently to do that. But they arrived yesterday. We picked them up in Las Vegas, and no delays, no lost luggage, and so, we actually were on time. Today, we've been out enjoying some activities in the community. They went shooting with the police department this morning. We visited the Dixie Rock, the Sugarloaf, and then stopped by the new park there with the water conservancy district, and looked at that. Had lunch in town, and then went out to Bloomington, where the Bundys and the Andersons treated them to some experiences with horses and ropes. And so, they enjoyed that. So, that's why they may have the attire of some bandanas, and some lassos, and cowboy hats with them.
So, we should've just said, "Howdy."
Howdy. There you go. So, then we took them on some tours, some of the city parks out in the south end of the town. The Little Valley Fields, and showed them the pickleball courts, and then construction going on there. Stopped by Seg Miller Farm, and then made our way back here. So, they've had a great time. Tomorrow, they'll tour the course in the morning, and then attend the international luncheon. And then, of course, Saturday's the marathon day. And then, Sunday, we actually take them to Zion and Springdale, where they spend the day shopping, doing a little hiking in the park. So, we're fortunate that this year, they passed a continuing resolution in Congress, so the park will be open. So, that's always good. We just don't have to drive through and not look. Then that evening, we, a Sunday evening, we have the farewell dinner with the host families. And we have about six host families, seven host families this year, that are helping with accommodating them in their homes. And so, we have an evening meal with them, and celebrate the experience here. And then, Monday, they're back in Las, we take them back to Las Vegas, where they spend the night, and then catch a flight back to Japan. So, it's quick and furious. But again, council, we welcome you to join us tomorrow at the international luncheon, as well as a Sunday evening, if you'd like. Just let us know, and we'll make arrangements at the farewell dinner. It's always a fun activity.
Thank you, Gary. I will be there tomorrow for the luncheon. Anyone else going to the luncheon tomorrow? Betty? Jimmy? Gil? Very, okay, very good.
Great.
And then, Sunday, I'll be there Sunday night. I think you already knew that. But any others, you're welcome, if you want to come Sunday night.
Yep, just let us know.
Also, just want to mention, previous, previously, I've had the opportunity to go to Ibigawa twice. The city manager went a couple of years ago. Gil went a couple of years ago, a different year. Jimmy will be representing us this year, in November. And then, looking forward to opportunities for the others of you to maybe go in the future. So, it's a fantastic opportunity. We love the association with Ibigawa. So, what would you like to do next, Gary? Should we have James visit for a minute?
Sure.
About the mayor's walk?
And then, we could bring Chia up, and maybe she can help introduce the delegates.
Okay, okay, let's do that. Let's go to that first, and then we'll bring them up, and then we can go out.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. We have a unique opportunity, and it's a privilege every year to be able to give the delegates from Japan gifts from the Exchange Club. As some of you know, 40-plus years ago, members of the Exchange Club were primarily involved in establishing the marathon. After it grew to be really big, we stepped back, turned it over to the city, and started doing the mayor's walk. So, I know this is the 29th year for us, and 39th year for the marathon. So, I'm not sure how long we have had this privilege to welcome and honor the delegates from Ibigawa, but it is definitely something that we look forward to and enjoy. So, if you're not going to be running the marathon, which probably, I don't think very many of you are going to be, we hope to see you Saturday morning to walk the mayor's walk with us. And of course, I'm sure that we probably have a couple delegates there as well. So, we're thankful, and we're excited. We're, the theme this year is making tracks.
That's right.
So, we're making tracks across the world. We're making tracks at the All Abilities Park. And a portion of the proceeds from this mayor's walk will go to further that savings account that we have set aside to help with that, so.
Well, we sure appreciate it. Just by way of hands, on the stand here, and also in the audience, how many of you have ever run the St. George Marathon? Raise your hands. Gary? Guzman? Okay? Even I did. Yeah. How many of you have walked the mayor's walk? Okay, we've got to do better than that. So, let's try to make a promise here tonight. Let's get everyone we can and go to the mayor's walk. It's good for you. It's only 2.1 miles. If you're not going to jog or run the 26.2, we ought to be able to do the 2.1. We even have shuttle buses that take you back to your car.
And enjoy a scone breakfast, of course.
Oh, absolutely. And there's a cute young man that makes me a capital M every year, scone. It's pretty good with honey butter. So, anyway, fantastic, and we appreciate. The Exchange Club has already donated $100,000 towards the All Abilities Park, and they're going to further that again this year. So, thank you, James. James McFadden is the president of the St. George Exchange Club this year. Thank you.
So, I am here with a few of our other fellow Exchangeites. And we'll go ahead, once we've kind of gotten to...
Once we've introduced them.
Introduced everybody, we'll go ahead and go out to the foyer to get some pictures and hand out the gifts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please pass on our thanks to the rest of the members of the club. Okay, so, let's introduce our delegation.
Chia, do you want to come up here with me? Chia's the tour guide translator that travels with them. My Japanese just isn't as good as it used to be. Right. So, first, we'd like to introduce Mitsuyoshi Oba. Oba-san? Mitsubishi-san is with the, Mitsuyoshi-san is with the city administration, and he's actually Mayor Somiya's representative this year, from Japan. Next, Jun Kawada. Again, he's a city staff person. Next, Seiji Kanbada. Again, with the city staff from Ibigawa.
And the photographer.
And Yoshihiro Kato-san, and he's with the Track and Field Athletic Society for the, kind of, the state of Gifu. And they're the ones that produce and organize the Ibigawa Marathon. Next, we'd like to introduce the runners that will be running. Right. And the first is the male winner from the Ibigawa Marathon, Kenji Miyazaki. And he ran their marathon in 2:33.
Ooh, yeah.
So. And next, we'd like to introduce the female runner, Mitsue Tomita. Mitsue was actually here in 2013, and ran the St. George Marathon. And she ran the Ibigawa Marathon in 2:59. So, she's looking for a three-hour marathon. Next, we have two runners who represent the city of Ibigawa. The first is Masaki Sato, from the male. And then, next, Mari Takahashi, who is the female runner representative from the city of Ibigawa. So, they're a great group. We've kind of gotten to bond a little bit, and quite well, in the last 24 hours. Excited to have them here in our community.
Could we all come down and greet them? Let's go walk down there. Welcome. Run fast. Welcome. Good to see you again. Good luck. Good luck in the past, brother. Good luck tomorrow. Good luck tomorrow.
So, again, we're just excited to have them in our community, and they're having a great time seeing the community. So, again, if you see them around at the end of the marathon, in the VIP area, feel free to stop by and say hi.
Thank you. Arigato. Thank you. There is so much that we learn and benefit from through this association, and I applaud the former mayors and councils, and city manager, and Kent, and his team, all that have been involved with this association for these 27 years. So, wonderful. Okay. I want to mention, before we go any further, we have with us, you might notice, a few young people here on the dais. We have Abby Benyon, and she is a youth council member, the Youth City Council of St. George. Abby, welcome. And, yeah. And we also have Isaac Jines, who is the Youth City Council Recorder. And that's why he's sitting by our recorder. Thank you for being here. They're doing some job shadowing, and we've invited them all to do that. It's a little tricky between their school and our schedules and what we're doing, but, council, I just encourage you, when you can, you know, they'll contact us. They'll be given, if they haven't already been, our information, and they may call you and say, "Can I tag along to a meeting," or whatever. So, great opportunity, and good for us, too. We're happy to have you with us. Thank you. Next, we have the opportunity, once a year, to hear from our hospital. Dixie Regional Medical Center is obviously incredibly important to our city, our county, and really southwest Utah. And I might be a little biased. My day job is with a division of Intermountain Healthcare, but, that said, I still feel like we all would be in agreement that that is one of the key components of our city, and between the university, and the airport, and the hospital, you know, those are three legs of a stool, I believe, that are critically important to our economic and health, you know, physical health of our community. So, today, we're pleased to have Steve Kaplan, who is the chairman of the governing board of Dixie Regional Medical Center, here to present the state of the hospital. So, Chair Kaplan, and with him is Teri Draper. I told her I was going to recognize her. She is the communications director for the southwest region for Intermountain Healthcare. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, Pastor, for that inspiring, beautiful invocation, I felt, the Spirit as you offered that. Thank you very much. And Teri Draper is a remarkable person. She's a wonderful professional. So much of what we know about the hospital with respect to communications and PR originates from her and her office, so we're very grateful to work with her. And we'd like to excuse our CEO, Administrator Teri Kane. She's traveling tonight, and I'm happy to be here, representing the entire administration. Thank you, as I began. Thank each one of you individually and collectively for your service as mayor, city council, and city attorney, city manager, all of you and your staffs for the great service that you do in the community.
Thank you, Steve.
You are welcome. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. It is wonderful to live in a community where we have such remarkable healthcare. It is healthcare that far surpasses what's typically available in communities much larger than we are, but especially so for communities of our size. I'm representing the governing board, as you said. The governing board is appointed by the Intermountain Healthcare System Board of Directors. And our responsibility as the governing board is to oversee all of the operations of our local medical center, financial, patient care, patient quality and safety, and anything related to the governance of the institution. So, the CEO and the administrative team report regularly to us of the great progress that they're making. And it is amazing progress. I can tell you that our results, our patient results, our financial results are amazing. Let me draw your attention to some of those. I think each of you has a handout, front and page, front and back, one-page handout. If you look at the Dixie Regional Medical Center statistics for 2013 and 2014, it's this backside with a couple of pictures or images embedded. To your right, you'll see a column of 2014 statistics. Let me point out a couple of things to you that will be of interest. First of all, total admissions in 2014 increased over 2013 for a total of 21,000. And at any given time, we have about 240 inpatient beds under care. We performed almost 5,000 inpatient surgeries, 8,300 outpatient surgeries. It is amazing that we have treated in 2014 45,000-plus ER visitors, 2,400 births, lab tests over 1 million, 140,000 imaging procedures. New employees hired, just new employees in 2014 was five, over 500. And total employees at the end of the year was 2,131. Volunteer hours is amazing. Almost 30,000 hours of volunteer hours provided by local volunteers, which we understand is among the best, the highest number of hours in the system of any facility. That includes Intermountain Medical Center in Salt Lake City. And at the end of last year, we had 288 physicians, quite a difference from where we were with eight physicians only a few decades ago.
Do you remember those days, Gary? It hasn't been that long ago, when they were just, yeah, medical associates, I believe, they were called at the time, and there were just five or six of them at the time, and some of them are still practicing.
True. On the back page, where Teri Kane is pictured in the top-left corner, you will see a couple of categories. First of all, is the Intermountain Healthcare Recognition. So, you probably know this, but we should emphasize that Intermountain Healthcare is internationally renowned, and there are many, many recognitions to its name. It is perceived, and in actuality is, one of the leading healthcare organization systems in the world. On occasion, I travel to corporate headquarters in Salt Lake City, and almost always, we see delegations of international visitors, healthcare teams, who are coming into the United States to this system in particular, to understand how we do what we do, and why we have such amazing results. On the top-right-hand corner, you'll see just a summary of the awards and recognitions that came in 2014 to Dixie Regional Medical Center. It's amazing. You can review that on your own. But I would point out that our Open Heart Surgery or Cardiovascular Care is ranked number one in the United States of every hospital in the United States for heart failure readmission, and ranks number 29 of every hospital in the United States for heart care, patient engagement. That's just one example. I recently had a chance to do an interview and to answer a few questions, and I will share with you those questions, along with my answers, just so you can get a feel for what is really unique about Dixie Regional Medical Center. The first question that the interviewer had is, can you name three or four things that really differentiate us from any other community of our size, or even much larger? What is it that we have? What's really our unique formula? Number one, I would say, is the quality of our care. It is award-winning. The clinical outcomes are remarkable. Not only do we have terrific physicians who come from the most illustrious training programs in the country, such as Johns Hopkins or Mayo Clinic, but we also have great mid-level and nursing care staff. Affordability within Intermountain Healthcare and Dixie Regional in particular is amazing. For example, if one were required to receive Open Heart Surgery, they could do so at our medical center in St. George for a total cost of about $60,000. If they had the same procedure performed in Las Vegas, a typical Las Vegas hospital, the cost would be $260,000, so almost five times the price. And the outcomes, the quality of care here, of course, is much, much better. What are some of the things that we can highlight that really differentiate us from others? It's, there's really no comparison. For example, we have a life-flight service. We have a rotary helicopter that travels all over the region and brings in hundreds of patients who are needing critical care. It was only a few years ago that all of those patients were transported past our medical center to trauma centers in Las Vegas or Salt Lake City. And now, because we have an amazing trauma care center, there are very few cases that would need to leave our medical center. Trauma care, we are practicing at Level 2 trauma care designation, and will become certified toward the end of this year. That includes any emergency orthopedic, trauma care, surgery, neurosurgery, that would be spine surgery, cranial surgery, emergency interventional stroke care, and of course, cardiovascular. We have a neonatal intensive care unit that is the top in the Intermountain Healthcare system. So, think of Intermountain Healthcare as the top system in the world, and then think of our NICU, Neonatal Intensive Care Unit, as being the top in the system. Our clinical director here locally is the director system-wide for all NICUs in Intermountain Healthcare. Cardiovascular surgery, I've mentioned how we are award-winning in that regard. Neurosurgery, we've done hundreds and hundreds of cases of trauma cranial surgery. Many lives have been saved. You know about some of those. But it was only a short time ago when patients needed to go elsewhere. Now, patients of that same condition are being handled right here at Dixie Regional. Oncology care is remarkable, and I'll talk about genomics in just a moment. Our case management, social services, behavioral medicine is terrific. We have amazing preventative healthcare and outpatient services. Live Well is a program that incorporates education, workshops, an informative website, seminars, and an annual health fair. Our facilities and equipment are remarkable. For a community of our size to have the advanced equipment that we do is an amazing thing. And our food service, the campus, and the related clinics are great. I would point out that we are named almost perennially as one of the 20 most beautiful hospitals in the United States. So, it's a great place to recover, but it's also a great place to view aesthetically. Let me mention something about genomics. You probably are aware that genomics is a method for treating advanced-stage cancer patients. And we do it better here in southern Utah at our medical center than anyone else in the country. In short, genomics means that a patient with stage IV cancer care receives a biopsy, that tissue sample then is deconstructed at the DNA level, and then a panel of internationally known and skilled physicians analyzes that DNA and makes a recommendation of a targeted drug that's currently available in the marketplace that is applied to the patient with very little intervention compared to the conventional methods of cancer treatment, for the purpose of extending life and the quality of life at a much, much lower cost. So, in the world, on the globe today, there's only one advanced tumor board that looks at oncology stage IV cases from around the world, from many, many countries, from the top systems in the United States. And where is that board? It's here, at Dixie Regional Medical Center. We have a renowned oncology researcher, Lincoln Nadald, who has collaborated with Stanford Medical School, and they've established labs and panels here, and the care is just remarkable. There are many, many reasons to live in St. George, Utah, as you mentioned, Mayor. Agree with everything that you said, but among them is really the care, the health care that one would receive at Intermountain Healthcare's Dixie Regional Medical Center. And I like to refer to DRMC as a jewel in the desert. It's the best care. There's no better place. And I should mention that our not-for-profit mission is essential to the success of this organization. DRMC operates at a thin operating margin, in part because the cost of the care is so low, and in part because of the charity care given. And I should mention now that the charity care given to this community by DRMC in 2014 was in excess of $35 million. And what does Intermountain do with the thin margin that it produces from the low cost of care, but the high-quality services that it collects revenue for? It reinvests it back in the medical center, equipment, and new employee training, and in new hires. We do not distribute any of our... We do not distribute any of our profits, as small as they are, to shareholders or to executives who are in line for large bonuses. And the last thing I'll say is that you are like, I am very excited about the expansion project. We have, in the existing hospital, 400,000 square feet. We're in the process of designing and constructing an additional 400,000 square feet, so the facility size will double. We're in the late stages of design. There will be groundbreaking in spring of 2015.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, thank you. And a ribbon cutting in mid-2018. And I can answer any questions you might have about the operations or maybe particularly the project and expansion.
Council members, any questions for Steve?
Okay. The, the expansion is, perhaps you know, the purpose of the expansion is, number one, to relocate the care that's provided on the old 400 East campus that is obsolete in terms of its, its structure, but not in terms of its function. So all of women and children services will be transported to the new location on River Road, and there will be an entire tower, medical tower dedicated to women and children services. At this point, it's estimated to be five or six levels. Then there will be another patient tower built just to the east of where the existing tower is. Will expand imaging and other related services, and it, it's a beautiful project. Councilman Oomquist, you had a question?
Well...
I'll, I'll invite Teri up because she's better at answering questions than I am.
It's, it's a question, maybe, but I want you to toot your horn a little more, because on a very individual basis, some patients that contract certain diseases or need certain drugs to help fight off the disease or heal qualify for the experimental level. In other words, the patient is from the drug company where it's so expensive to develop a new drug, they're allowing that patient to basically get the drug for free.
That's pretty good.
And some call that a, you know, at a guinea pig level. But they don't just evaluate the patient and their other relative health to be able to react properly to the drug, but they look at the patient's team. And in two particular cases that I know of, it was because of Dixie Regional's team that they qualified for the new experimental drug. Otherwise, they wouldn't as an individual standing alone. So again, not really a question, more of a, a personal level that I've seen where someone can be grateful for Dixie Regional's, not only oncology level, but other kind of strange things that we keep creating new diseases, it seems like, and they need to be fought off.
Well put. Thank you.
I, I love questions like that.
Hardballs, huh?
Any, any other questions or comments?
Just one. In the maternity, I don't even know what you call it these days. Things change, are changing so fast, but obstetrics. What will the nature of those rooms be like? Have they changed much? Are they suites with dads and moms and?
Very much so. And we've, we've incorporated patient input into this design round as they're looking to build that new tower. And it's not, it's not such that we'll keep the, the mother and father, currently, when the, when a baby arrives in a family, the father and the mother in the, in the family can all be in the same room together, but then mom goes to a postpartum unit. One of the things I like best about the consideration of this plan is the ability, and this is, again, this is in the design phase, so I'm not sure this is going to go through, but all of us women are pulling for this, to be able to keep the whole family together for the whole experience. In some larger facilities, they do that. I'm hoping that makes it through the design phase, because anybody who's delivered a baby knows you don't want to move very far right after, up to another unit.
That's great. Thank you.
You also haven't mentioned the real gem, which is on the bottom floor, the cafeteria.
Award-winning food service, that is true. Our, our cafe is one of the best restaurants in town.
It is.
Maybe the last thing I'll say is that we are approaching next year, our, next year will be the 40th anniversary of our local hospital's affiliation with Intermountain Healthcare. And as you may know, the story behind that is amazing. It's inspiring. It was based on a small financial transaction and a big handshake between one of our county commissioners, Mary Webb, and David Jepson, who was vice president, or I should say, vice chair of Intermountain Healthcare at the time. And the, the promise that was asked by Commissioner Webb was, will you take care of us? Will you invest in our facility? Will you maintain a commitment to providing the best healthcare in this community? And the eye-to-eye commitment from Dave Jepson was, we will. And as a businessman and, and, and a student of remarkable case studies on ethics and integrity, I can tell you, this is one of the most amazing stories in, in commerce and business and in healthcare. In 40 years, we've gone from a small community hospital to a tertiary medical center with the most remarkable lineup of clinical services and equipment and facilities and physician care that can be found anywhere in the country. And we would not have arrived at that level were it not for Intermountain Healthcare making a commitment and following through on that commitment. So we're grateful for that affiliation, and I hope that we, as a community, will be loyal back to Intermountain Healthcare by being charitable in our philanthropic giving and by being loyal with respect to how we call upon them for services and care in the future.
Thank you, Steve. There's probably little irony in the fact that Mr. Jepson lives across the street from Dixie Regional now.
And that was on purpose. I've talked to, to Vice Chair Jepson, who is just an amazing healthcare executive, and it wasn't too long ago that he sold his home in Tokerville so that he could set up home right across the street from the patient towers. Thank you again for your remarkable service in the community and for your amazing support for Intermountain Healthcare Dixie Regional Medical Center.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you both. Okay. Let's, I don't believe there's anything else on the informal list. Is that right, Gary? I don't think so. So Gary, I believe there may have been a few changes to the agenda. Do you want to explain if there have been?
Yeah, we're deleting, tabling the two-bid openings on the agenda for tonight.
Two A and B?
Yes. That's the only changes.
So those are tabled. So let's, let's start with item 1A, comments from the public. I've received two on these forms. Are there any others who have not filled out forms that would like to? Okay. Then let's start with Jinx Dabney. Welcome, Jinx. Good to have you here.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I'm an attorney. I'm a toastmaster. I'm an exchangeite. And I am in the sunshiners, and more importantly, I live in the Boulders and St. James area. Many years ago, my mother gave me some very good advice. She said, if you don't have anything nice to say, don't say it. I have found over the years that that is a bit of a challenge for me. But I am here to say something nice to you all tonight, because you did something good. We have a light.
Almost.
We have. A light. We thank you for that. That's going to save some people from getting hurt. You did good. And as long as you don't mess up, you won't have to undergo the Dabney wrath at some later time. Thank you all for that light.
Thank you. You're sure, you're sure welcome.
Thank you.
We've, we've, this is, you're speaking of the one, I think, at St. James and River Road, which is not operational yet, but it will be soon.
That's right. You, you saved some lives.
Yep.
You did good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jinx. And, and again, thanks to our director, Cameron Cutler, who I don't see him here, but, and his staff for engineering and getting out to bid and, and working with the contractors for the one at Brigham and River, which has been operational for probably a month now. And that is really helpful, too. Council, I've had a lot of reports from the school, from families, who've said, thank you for getting that done. We'd hoped to have it done before school started. It wasn't, but it's done now, and everyone's been very patient. We're glad to have it in. And this one, you know, River Road is just a, it's obviously a major corridor, and there's more coming, as we know. We've budgeted for a major expansion between about 2,450 South on River Road and the Fort Pierce Wash, where the bridge is, and one of those bridges will be replaced, assuming we can afford it, Gary, right? The way bids are these days, but, but we're hopeful that we can do that and go out to bid with that, I think, soon. And there will probably be another light there at River Road and Horseman Park. And, and again, the time, depending on the time of day, that's needed, isn't it, Jimmy? So we appreciate that, positive feedback, and, and we're, we're always happy to receive both kinds. Let's see. Second one, Janine, is it Howitt?
Correct.
Very good. Welcome. I believe this is on the issue of recycling.
I recognize you've had many meetings on this, and I have been, we've, we've lived here for two and a half years. We moved from Washington State where we had recycling, and so I'm familiar with recycling, and we've been using the Bennies. And I don't, how many of you have read the editorial by Bill Prescott in the paper yesterday?
I read it.
How accurate is it?
Oh, I think parts of it are, and I think parts of it are, are a bit of, you know, carrying it maybe a little bit.
A little further than, than...
There's, there's no doubt that, you know, when you're talking about a recycling program like this, you're putting more trucks out there to pick things up, you know, pick up the recyclables. And so is there more pollution because of that? Yeah, perhaps. We're not using the same trucks for both trash and recycling. But, you know, you start somewhere, and are you diverting, you know, recycle, recyclable material from the landfill? Yes, you are. Are you lengthening the length of the life of the landfill? Yes, you are. Even though it may be a long life anyway, if you can lengthen it 10 years, is that better than not? If you can lengthen it 20 years, is that even better? So, yeah, I think he, he kind of stops short in some areas and goes a little farther in others, but go ahead.
And I figured that, too.
Yeah.
Is everything shipped out?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, and that's really up to the recycler, but as of this point, yes, it's, it's shipped out.
Someday, we might have the...
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, you know, even to sort it, there's some sorting that happens here, but then it's, you know, there, you got to have volume, you know, for, for just about anything, you got to have volume to have it make sense to, to do the recycling. And right now, at this time, there's not much that can be done here.
Is, is there, I had a neighbor say to me, somewhere she, she was, this last little paragraph about using it to produce energy.
Mm-hmm.
Has that been considered here?
Yes. It would cost millions and millions of dollars. And so, you know, again, maybe, maybe someday, there will be, yeah, but this is a place to start, and, but all fair points.
Now, the Bennies will continue?
They will on some basis. They will probably be reduced because we won't have as much need for them. So some locations may be, and the council all knows this because we're on the Solid Waste District Board together, so we'll look at that once this goes into effect in February-ish.
And, and everything's going to go in the same bin?
Commingled.
And be sorted?
Except glass. And glass will, if you want to recycle glass, you'll need to continue to do that through the Bennies.
And he didn't say anything about newspapers? Are they recycled?
They are.
Okay.
And cardboard and other paper.
Right.
And of course metals.
Well, all the things that are in the Bennies.
Plastic.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And, and again, Council, I, I know you, you know this because we've been in this together, but we are in the second month now of our opt-out phase. We've tried to be very upfront about this, and I was just showing Councilman Hughes that currently, I show that 7.8% of our, of our residents, if you will, consumer, customers have opted out as of right now. This is live, I'm looking at a pie chart right now. And the vast majority of those have sided second home, those kinds of things. Some just don't want to do it. Some have said, you know, they don't want to spend the extra money. It's $4 a month. But we're tracking that. We're asking people to give us comments. Many of them are, so we'll learn from that. Again, we have until October 31st to opt out. The good news is, if you want to do it, here's what you need to do. Nothing, right? If you don't want to do it, you go online or you call us, and the information is on your utility bill, your water, sewer, garbage bill, last month and again this month. Everyone will get notified twice, whether you're an auto pay and you, you know, or whether you get a, a bill in your mail. You'll be notified by email or hard copy, one way or another. And it's also on our website, and it's on, and you can go and look and get all the information, all about it, how it works, so forth. So appreciate that comment. Very good, very good time to bring that up. Okay, let's go on to the next portion of our agenda.
Can I ask just one more thing?
Sure.
Put something in the paper again and again and again, you know, because I've been listening to you when you come on the radio, and, you know, I've been in favor of it, but this is really disturbing, you know?
Yeah.
So you need to address that, because a lot of people are going to say, oh, wow, you know?
That's a good point. We'll talk about that. Maybe there's something we can do there. We can work with maybe the spectrum and see if we could issue something.
Because I worked the last election, and I didn't even ever see it online before.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't go online. I didn't see it in the paper, and so, you know, we had to dismount it now.
We are doing it. Gil just mentioned, we are having a big feature on it in our Inside St. George, I believe, Mark, that's going out right now. And, and how's that distributed, Mark?
It's online, and then it's available in the city facilities.
Okay.
And in Jacober.
So we'll have that spread around as much as we can. I've also, it's, it's also, will be online in my column, and it's also in the Independent this weekend, I believe. And so we're trying to get the word out in those ways, but, but that's a good point. We'll look at that, see if there's something else we can do. Okay, Gary?
All right, then we'll go into the rest of the agenda. First item is, consider approval of the financial report for August 2015. I know I see Deanna in the back, if you've got any specific questions, but again, we're very early in the year. It's only our second month, and our sales tax, this last allotment was up 8.5%, which is higher than what our estimates are at, and so we still feel pretty positive about our revenues and the direction we're heading so far in the first two months of the year.
Any questions, Council? We always appreciate these reports, very informative for us, and lets us know exactly how things are going. Our managers do a great job. But any questions?
It's football season, so it's kind of like early in the fir, first quarter.
Exactly.
And we're doing really well.
Yeah. It's a good way to start the game.
Yep.
Ready for a motion to approve, then?
Motion to approve the financial report for the two months ended August 31st, 2015.
Second.
Ooh. Motion by Gil and a second by?
Michelle.
Michelle. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. By the way, I never mentioned, I want to excuse Councilman Bowcutt, he had to be out of town this evening, but appreciate everyone else being here, so we can have a four-fifths of our council here. Gary?
The next item is a housekeeping item. There's an existing drainage easement at 170 North, 400 East that's on the record, and we have another drainage easement that was moved, and this, this goes actually right underneath a building, and so we... And so, we failed a number of years ago, I don't know when those buildings were built, the Sun Rock area over there, but we didn't vacate the easement. And so, this action would allow us to vacate the easement. We already have the easement that's replacing this particular easement, so we just get it off our books and return it to the property owner.
This is Flood Street, right?
Yeah.
I've been just racking my brain, trying to figure out where 400 East was.
[laughing]
It's Flood Street to me.
Yes, exactly. Me, too.
I'm not sure why we haven't changed the name yet.
Okay. Well, we don't need to. We'll have another flood there soon.
I'm just wondering why we don't need a drainage easement on Flood Street, but that's okay.
North of Flood Street.
Well, Mayor, I can't see that this is moving this much, but maybe 20 feet, and...
Just going outside the building, yeah?
Basically along a different path, but right nearly where it was before. So, I move that we approve the ordinance for the easement vacation at approximately 170 North 400 East Street.
Second.
Motion by Gil with a second by Jimmy. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor. This is an ordinance requiring a roll call vote, so all in favor, starting with Gil, say aye.
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 The motion carries. Thank you.
Well, I don't see anybody here from the Water Department that I can't see. Oh, there he is. Okay, the one that made that outstanding presentation at the last work meeting. He's going to come up and talk about the resolution adopting the local limit study with pretreatment program. You're not going to read that whole book to us, are you?
I can start, but no. As far as the resolution to approve the 2014 Technically Based Local Limits for the Wastewater Pretreatment Program, the City of St. George Technically Based Local Limits Study that was dated July 2014 has been reviewed and is attached. The Technically Based Local Limits establish the maximum loading of pollutants that can be accepted from industrial users without causing a violation of applicable environmental standards. The Technically Based Local Limits are developed and enforced to prevent pass-through at the treatment plant, interference in the treatment plant or the collection system, and to protect sludge disposal practices with the POTW. It prevents impact to health and safety of the general public. And therefore, it be resolved by the St. George City Council that the City of St. George Water Services inform the Utah Department of Environmental Quality, Division of Water Quality, that the above actions were taken, and that the St. George City Council does hereby approve the City of St. George Technically Based Local Limits Study.
As you might recall, when we talked about this in the work meeting, we're talking about the, you know, the limits that we would allow industrial user to dump into the sewer system, that there's a certain limit that we would allow them to put in, based on the effect of that discharge into our system, and how we can treat it downstream, and with our bugs and all the stuff you guys know well about, how we treat that. An example would be the Old Blue Bunny facility, where the pollutant that they wanted to drop, the discharge they wanted to make into our sewer system was higher than the local limits that we established, so they had to establish a pretreatment program to take out some of those pollutants before it went into our sewage system and we treated it at the wastewater treatment plant. And we do have some other, and we talked about it in the work meeting, some of the medical metal companies and the refinishing, whatever their plating companies and those, that the limits are primarily, we watch very closely, because what they would put into our system would have a significant impact on our treatment down the stream. Same way with with restaurants and in the pretreatment program, that we try to monitor what goes into our system, so that we don't create a down road cost, a downstream cost that's spread over the entire system by one entity or one business or whatever it may be. And so, that's the reason we have the program. And that's those limits we talked about in the work meeting. So, nothing's changed from those limits that that we discussed in that meeting.
Any questions, Counsel? These are those things that we do, that a lot of people don't realize, that protect everyone, and...
Yeah, we talked about this in a work meeting, and and it may not sound like it, but this stuff is fascinating. I mean, and when you've gone down there and seen the wastewater treatment plant, and see the excitement that those people that work down there have of what they do, it is impressive. And this whole thing with the bugs that are there, and if too much of something comes in there, it can kill the bugs and disrupt the whole system, it really is kind of a fascinating, and it doesn't smell as bad as you think down there. It really doesn't, but...
Michelle might disagree with you.
I disagree, but...
But it really is.
It depends what part of the plant you're...
That's right.
Exactly. I don't think the plant workers down there would would agree that it's a necessary evil, but it is necessary. And it is pretty impressive what we're what we're doing down there, and what those employees do, and what you guys all do with this, these limits. I was looking through these limits, and I know there's certain things that we that we look for, and we had a great discussion in a work meeting. I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's others who want to talk about sewer. I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the resolution to adopt the Technically Technically Based Local Limits Study for the Pretreatment Program.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jimmy and a second by, was that Michelle? Any discussion on the motion? This is a resolution requiring a roll call vote. All in favor, starting with Betty this time, say aye.
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 Aye. And may I add that you do this almost hourly, every day, check and monitor and, you know, and I think people don't realize, like Jimmy was saying, just how detailed you look at every drop of water and other things.
Yeah, we appreciate that, and we do, actually, during the the summertime, we send back almost 3 million gallons back into the system that can be used.
That's right, and I was just going to make that point, and we appreciate the dedication of our employees to to develop that standards and those books, and we've not had any violations, no, no orders from the state. And we do treat that wastewater, and we clean it, and then we we reuse it on all our parks and numerous other places and golf courses, and and it's incredible that it starts right here with these limits, to make sure that we can treat it correctly down there, and so we we're grateful for our employees that take the time and effort, and that are technically enough qualified and professional in what they do to keep us out of problems with the state. It's a very technical, difficult program, but but we have a great staff.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Gary, I forgot one thing that I'd like to do if we could at this time. We have, we have with us Mrs. Ivans, who is Brittany Hollins Head. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Would you come forward, and we're going to talk about a proclamation that I was supposed to print and sign, but I have a copy of it here that I'd like to read, and then I'd like her to talk a little bit about it, any, anything she'd like to say. But first of all, let me read this proclamation, as as this is a word and a condition you may not have heard or been able to pronounce, but I'm going to help you, and if I butcher it, she will help me. But I've been taught, it is called, this is called dysautonomia. Dysauton...
Yeah.
Huh? Is that, is that it?
Yeah, most people butcher that, so...
Okay, well, they they tried to help me. So, this is a proclamation for Dysautonomia Awareness Month, which is October. Whereas, dysautonomia is a group of medical conditions that result in a malfunction of the autonomic nervous system, which is responsible for automatic bodily functions, such as respiration, heart rate, blood pressure, digestion, temperature control, and more. Whereas, some forms of dysautonomia are considered rare diseases, such as multiple system atrophy and pure autonomic failure, while other forms of dysautonomia are common, impacting millions of people in the U.S. and around the world, such as diabetic autonomic neuropathy, neurocardiogenic syncope, and postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome. I know what some of those mean. Whereas, dysautonomia impacts people of any age, gender, race, or background, including many individuals living right here in St. George. Whereas, some forms of dysautonomia can be very disturbing, disabling and disturbing, and this disability can result in social isolation, stress on the families of those impacted, and financial hardship. Whereas, some forms of dysautonomia can result in death, causing tremendous pain and suffering for those impacted and their loved ones. Whereas, increased awareness about dysautonomia will help patients get diagnosed and treated earlier, save lives, and foster support for individuals and families coping with this in our community. Whereas, Dysautonomia International, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that advocates on behalf of patients living with dysautonomia, encourages communities to celebrate Dysautonomia Awareness Month each October around the world. And whereas, we seek to recognize the contributions of the professional medical community, patients, and family members who are working to educate our citizenry about dysautonomia in St. George. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan T. Pike, Mayor of the City of St. George, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Dysautonomia Awareness Month throughout the City of St. George. So, I will get that printed and sign it, and we'll be happy to give you a hard copy of that tomorrow, if you'd like it. But I wanted to read that and and let us know a little bit more about it, and if there's anything you would like to say to to further explain, that'd be appreciated.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for having us here. It's a real honor and a privilege to be standing here, literally to be standing. I've had POTS, which is a form of dysautonomia, for 10 years now, and seven of those years, that's how long it took to get a diagnosis. So, I spent seven years wondering why my heart was racing, why my blood pressure was dropping, why I felt anxious, why I lost the ability to swallow and to sweat, and I was told repeatedly that it was all in my head. So, seven years later, they were finally able to give me a diagnosis, and they said you have POTS syndrome, postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome, which basically means your body can't compensate for your change in posture. When you stand up, your heart rate and your blood pressure are supposed to accommodate that, so that you don't faint, so that your blood doesn't pool. But in somebody with POTS, their blood pools in their limbs, their heart races, and their blood pressure plummets, and most of them faint. A lot of them have impaired digestion, a multitude of problems that makes it extremely hard to diagnose. So, through diet and exercise and all kinds of other crazy things, I've been able to control my symptoms, and I've been able to become an advocate for awareness, because there are so many people out there who are suffering, wondering what is wrong with them, and no doctor can tell them why. There is no streamlined process for diagnosis, there's no approved treatment, and there's no cure at this time. We have a multitude of people right here in southern Utah who probably feel hopeless and like they have no outlet and no support group, and that is why we are asking you, which you've just done, to proclaim October Dysautonomia Awareness Month. Today, for the first time as a nation, we are actually acknowledging dysautonomia, and at 10 o'clock tonight Eastern Time, Niagara Falls will be lighting up turquoise, which is the color of POTS awareness. Later on this month, you'll see other buildings, and you'll even see the White House lit up in turquoise lights in order to support and bring more light to the subject. So, that is our goal this month, and it is such an honor for, to know that the City of St. George is behind us. We hope to be pairing up with multiple doctors in Intermountain, who can help us come up with a better process, so that people are not left wondering and suffering for as long as I was. Today, we also have some, these are two other POTS patients here. Alina is 16 years old and often misses school because her symptoms are so bad. And Cindy was a nurse for Intermountain for 17 years and recently had to quit her job because her symptoms were just...
They're the cure.
Oh.
Were just too hard to deal with. So, I know they want to say a few words real quick. We have a turquoise light bulb for you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
If you would like to light up your porch this month, or...
I'll do it.
Anything, anywhere that you'd like to put this.
At least it's not red.
[laughing]
Perfect.
And we will actually be out at the Tuacan Market on Saturday, exchanging these for donations for anybody else who wants to light up their porch and support us in our venture to raise more awareness. So, I'll bring this up to you. I know they want to say a few things real quick, if that's okay.
That is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dysautonomia and POTS has drastically changed Alina's life. She has had diabetes type 1 since the age of 2. She also has celiac disease and hypothyroid. However, none of these horrible conditions took away the quality of life that has, POTS has taken. Overnight, she went from a vibrant dancer, an active athlete, to a bedridden teenager who could not attend school for most of her eighth grade year. She was, however, one of the lucky ones, because she was diagnosed within three weeks of her symptoms. I am so appreciative to the one doctor who knew about POTS and was able to solve the mystery that three weeks of hospitalization could not. Today, almost one year since this dreaded illness reared its ugly head, my daughter is back in school, but not without difficulty. Medications and bi-weekly home IVs also have eased her symptoms. However, she is constantly dizzy, nauseous, and describes her feeling like she has the flu nonstop. Her, she is also, has many absences, because of her symptoms are so severe at times she cannot even get out of bed. As I said earlier, she's one of the lucky ones. I could not imagine going six years with an undiagnosed illness. Six years is the average time it takes for someone with dysautonomia to be diagnosed because of the lack of knowledge in our medical field. Think about your body position when you go to the doctor. What position are you in when they check your blood pressure and your heart rate? The only way that a person with dysautonomia can be diagnosed is when you are standing. If a doctor was aware of dysautonomia, a simple 10-minute poor man's tilt table test done in his office could direct the path to diagnosis. I would hate to think where her quality of life would be if we were still on that six-year trek. Thank you.
Thank you. That is very interesting. Please, yeah.
Hi, my name is Cindy Jacobson, and as you heard, I have worked at IHTC for 17 years, 10 years as a nurse in the newborn ICU. In March of this year, I had to quit that job. I was in the ER four times in two weeks and nearly died. They were able to save my life, but they were not able to diagnose me. I had to go to Mayo Clinic across the country, literally on my last breath, with a good friend that carried me to get help. So, this was a good time to be here, having Steve and Terry here present. I have been talking to Terry Kane, trying to get awareness out about this, and Steve and Terry just promised me in the hallway that they would help us by putting it in the newsletters and trying to get the awareness out through the hospital. So, that is great, and I'm grateful to be here, and thank you so much for dedicating October to Dysautonomia Awareness Month.
You bet. Thank you very much, and we appreciate your courage. And I don't know, Counsel, had any of you heard of this? Do you recall hearing of this? When when this was presented to me by Mrs. Ivans? I had not heard of it, and and, you know, yeah, apparently not, but it's obviously incredibly serious and disabling, and and we just appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and we'll try to help in any way we can to make it more well-known, and I'll talk about it with Terry and Steve as well, so...
Appreciate it.
Anyway, thank you very much, Counsel. Anything you have to say? Gil?
Well, there's a website.
Yeah.
That's also helpful, DysautonomiaInternational.org. And then there's another one down below, which I believe is the...
DINET.org.
Okay, D-I-N-E-T.org. Who's the rest of your family? Why don't you introduce them or families?
We've got the whole crew here today. My husband Doug, you know, four of my kids.
Hello. This is our youngest Hunter. Our oldest, Michael.
Our oldest, Luka.
Yeah.
And the last one's there.
Make that through the last two.
I'll bet.
Yes.
My children are all actually in the process of being diagnosed with it as well, because for us, it's a genetic underlying condition. So, to get all of them here would have been quite difficult, so they're home today.
Can we ask my dad or mom to share?
Awesome. Well, this has really been educational for us, and it, you know, it is true in so many things that, you know, we're in this together, first with our families, then with our friends, and then with our whole community. So, you know, for better or for worse. So, anything we can do, please let us know, and hopefully the resources, the ability to diagnose will be better. And these sometimes new, sometimes not-so-new things that come up, it's just amazing, isn't it, how difficult it can be? My mother died of leukemia about 12 years ago. It took them, as far as we know, you know, not nearly as long as you, but it took them months to diagnose her, probably about a year. And she almost died before she was finally diagnosed. She was given allergy medications. She was told she was a hypochondriac. Any of that ever happen? And, yeah. And I can't tell you how mad it made me, you know, as a son. And I restrained myself from writing some pretty nasty letters at times.
And it's really sad when you're disheartened when a test comes back negative, because you're so searching for an answer.
Yeah. So, congratulations. Thank you for your taking this, you know, bull by the horns and being as positive as you can about it, and we'll be right there with you.
Do you guys have a local group that...
Support group? It's you.
We're it.
Okay.
We just met three days ago.
We do have a Facebook group that we just started after we met each other through Brittany. And it's Defeating Dysautonomia and POTS in Southern Utah. And we found a fourth person. Yeah, it's kind of amazing, like every couple of days, we find somebody else in southern Utah. It's like, do you know what POTS is? My daughter has one, and I have one. So, it's just, it's so much more common than you think. I'm a bonnie herder to grow.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you know, if they need us, we're there.
Well, that's the key to it. Well, thank you. We'll go find you on Facebook.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think Dave DeMill and Mari have stories to write.
Yeah. Okay, Gary?
Planning Commission Report. I think that's the next item. Okay. Item 1A from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a 32-lot residential subdivision final plat called Bridelgate Estates Phase III. Representative is region engineering and surveying. The property is located at 3030 East and approximately 2550 South in the Little Valley area. Zone is RE 12-5. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat approval. This is Bridelgate, so here's 3,000 East, right here. The Seg Miller Road is about right there. There is an easement that goes across this Lot 50 here for a sewer line that will be on the north side of that Lot 50. It'll be part of their lot. And then there are a number of lots in this area that fall within a high groundwater table. Any basements in those lots would have to have a geotechnical, put together some type of design to dilute the groundwater.
Questions, counsel, on this final plat? Item 6A, 1A from the Planning Commission Report.
Just, how does this interface with the old arena and the corrals?
So, the arena is right here.
Okay, so it's that ground right in front of the arena, or south of the arena?
Yeah, right. Exactly.
All right.
Other questions?
RE 12-5, I'll make a motion to approve. Final plat for Bridelgate Estates Phase III.
Sounds good. Motion by Jimmy, second by Gil. It sounded like a very strong...
Yeah, love it.
Motion, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item 1B from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a 10-lot residential subdivision final plat called Bridelgate Estates Phase IV. Representative again is region engineering and surveying. Property again is located approximately 3210 East and 2550 South. Zone is RE 12-5. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. So here is Phase III, right here. This is the easterly edge of the Bridelgate development, and again, a number of these lots as well fall within the high groundwater area. So basements wouldn't be recommended, but would have to go through some type of study to put in a basement.
Very good. Questions?
Move for approval of Bridelgate Estates Phase IV final plat.
Second.
Motion by Gil with a second by Betty. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It's nice to see this happening, by the way, because this is, as you know, this has been around for a while, gone through a couple of owners, and it's nice to see this get back and get going, yeah.
Okay, item 1C from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a 15-lot residential subdivision final plat called Desert Plateau Phase III. Representative is Development Solutions. Property is located at Desert's Edge Drive at approximately 6270 South. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. This, if you look at the map, here's the southern parkway, here's Desert Canyons Parkway. It's up in this area right here, just to the very south there, near the Arizona border.
It's amazing how much is going on over there. Yeah.
I had someone say, "Why did you build your airport out in the nowhere?" I said, "You just watch."
Just watch.
It's already happened. I'd be happy to move that we approve the final plat for Desert Plateau Phase III.
Second.
Motion by Betty with a second by Michelle. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item 1D is a request to approve a 12-lot residential subdivision final plat called Desert Plateau Phase IV. Representative is Development Solutions. Is located at Barrel Roll Drive at approximately 3550 East. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. Again, this one is just adjacent to that. It's right there. If you can look on the little vicinity map, it's right there.
Okay.
Well, I'll just complete it and move that we approve Desert Plateau Phase IV as well. It's III.
Second.
Motion by Betty and a second by Gil with a, by Jimmy. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Gil, did you have a comment?
Well, Mayor, besides myself, only Gary and a few others in this room know how this all came to pass. And it was through cooperation between the BLM, the city, Lucadia Corporation, and I'll let Gary say the rest. But we basically, every time we look at Webb Hill and its trails and park and the ability to use it, we can think of the trade that happened that Desert Canyons now is. So Gary, you want to comment a little on how that came to pass?
Well, when the Desert Tortoise was determined to be endangered or threatened, and they created a habitat area, the city-owned property within the habitat area where the old dump was at, and plus some other properties, where it used to be called the Hernia Dam, for those that may be historically know that. But we traded that couple of hundred acres, I believe, up there. We traded that to the BLM for property out by the new airport, which is now Desert Canyons. And Lucadia Corporation owned Webb Hill. So, the city ended up with Webb Hill, the BLM ended up with the Tortoise property, and Lucadia Corporation ended up with Desert Canyons. But we were smart enough to understand in that, that we reserved the right to purchase at $1,500 an acre, I believe, the property that would be in the future airport site. So we end up getting that property for a lot less than what we paid the other property. But it's a good deal for all parties, and now you're seeing Desert Canyon developing that, and it's in private hands, whereas before it was in BLM. So we got on the tax rolls as well, so.
Appreciate that, and we are glad the way that worked out. And it's protected that hillside, and we're still holding firm to that. Okay.
I guess that concludes the agenda. If people think this is a small agenda, this is normally not the way it is. Since we had a regular meeting last week, we took care of a huge amount of items, and so this is kind of the leftover from last week. So we're back now on schedule for first and third official meetings for October, and the three work meetings possibly in October. So, I do have a need for a short call session to talk about a property sale issue.
And I do have a few appointments to make, if we could, and then we'll do the minutes as well. So maybe let's go to 6B, appointments to boards and commissions. We need to appoint three members to what's going to be called, I believe, the Suntran Appeal Panel. Does that sound correct, Sean? And as I understand it, Sean, let me just clarify this, I believe there to be three members appointed, and I believe one of those is able to be the city manager's appointee.
Who will be a city appointee?
Correct. Okay, does that need to be done here, or can that be done separately?
The city manager can just appoint that. If he has a name, put that forward.
I think he does, and so we'll let him say that when we get to that point. So the names that I would put forward, and these have been recommended to me, I've contacted them, they are willing to serve, is, first one is Lance Heimleright. He is a physical therapist, and we have had some other dealings with him, and find him, believe he would be helpful in matters that maybe come before this appeals panel. Second one is Jamie Moore. She also, she is what's called a Community Integration Specialist at an organization here, the Red Rock Center for Independence. I think it's a natural fit for her. And I think that's all we need to do, but Gary, can you mention who you would suggest?
Yeah, my recommendation would be Cameron Cutler as the public records director.
Makes sense to me. So I would entertain a motion. Sean?
And one of these is a physician?
Physical therapist, not a physician. Neither one of them that I know of are they required to be?
Starts with a P, that should work.
No, that's a, the ordinance does require one member to be a physician. I could talk to, discuss this with Paula, because we do have to make one minor change as you're...
To the ordinance? Yes.
To clarify that with her. So if we could perhaps appoint Cameron, and if there's another one that you'd like to appoint tonight, and we can talk to, maybe not Hamel...
Heimleright?
Hamel right.
Okay.
Just to make sure that that one is okay.
Okay. Let's do that, then. So the motion would need to be to appoint Cameron Cutler as the employee member, and Jamie Moore as the community member.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle with a second by Betty. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One more board or commission tonight, and that is the Historic Preservation Commission. We have three members who, whose terms have expired, and I would like to reappoint them and with two different terms, and you'll see what I mean, just so we stagger them a little bit better. So, Gil Omquist has been serving on this commission. I would like him to be reappointed, to serve for a term that would end December 31, 2018. Okay? I would like to, and this would be regardless of his status as a city council member. I would like him to serve as a member from the public, if that's okay. And then also, Brooks Pace, who's been a member and contributed greatly, I would like him to serve, be reappointed to serve until through December 31, 2019. And then Kim Campbell to serve, and actually, he's currently the chair, would like to have him continue to serve as the chair of this Historic Preservation Commission for the same period through 12/31 of 19. All three I've spoken with, all three have agreed to those terms, and so I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Michelle. Any discussion?
How often do they meet?
Not very often, but Gil, can you comment? And Gary?
Well, certain individuals come before the planning department and, you know, wanting a building permit, or even ask Gary what the status is of certain buildings. And whether they're on a historic register, or simply they have some historic value to us, or even within our historic district, there are certain requirements that may cause them to, on at least the outside, make improvements, or on the other hand, maybe they can't do some things that they must qualify for a certain look and a historic appeal. So, that doesn't happen always, but we've been trying to work with people who want to purchase a property, recognizing it's a huge investment for them to take something built maybe in the late 1800s or early 1900s, and make it, one, safe for the public, as well as renovate it and have it maintain its original charm and historic value. So, they come to us with their plan, and we have qualified individuals that serve on this board that help to walk them through it, as well as staff members that assist. So how often? Once a month, but recently, maybe once every two or three months.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, I had a constituent say that there was only one person, and that they made all of the decisions, and so, and it was someone else that had told him that, so I just was curious.
Here's the other thing, and you know, there are requirements in terms of the types of individuals that can serve, and we've met that, and in terms of their qualifications. Also, you know, if there's any conflict, a person could, if needed, either declare that conflict, or if they needed to recuse themselves. And I think it's good that there are several of these people who have, in fact, I'll tell you who else is on the board, just so you know, on the commission. Peggy Childs, Lynn Cobb, I don't know how many of you know Lynn, she lives in the kind of downtown area. Paul Iverson, any of you know him? Paul's on this. Doug Alder, former president of Dixie State, Dixie College then. And then, of course, the ones I've mentioned, Gil Omquist, Kim Campbell, Brooks Pace. So, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will come back to you next time. We need to appoint probably an entire five new members of the sign review board, and I think that's going to be important going forward. So I'll come back to you, counsel, on that probably in two weeks. That's all I have, other than minutes. So I would, anyone who's read these minutes, I'd entertain motions, one at a time, to approve these.
I would move that we approve the minutes from the June 25, 2015 meeting.
Second, with line 34, needs a the changed to a that.
Line 34, that to that? Which page? Page one.
Page one. And Christina does a great job, because that's all I could find.
And that was a long meeting.
It was. That was a huge meeting.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting minutes for July 30, 2015?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Gil, second by Betty. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. August 6?
Approve August 6.
Second.
Motion by Betty, second by Gil. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Motion to approve the minutes for August 13.
Second.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Michelle. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. August 20, 2015.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Betty, second by Jimmy. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve August 27 minutes?
Second.
Motion by Jimmy, second by Betty. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve September 3?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, second by Jimmy. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. As you can tell, Christina's been working on minutes.
Tremendous.
There's one more on the back.
Motion to approve minutes for September 10?
Second.
That was Jimmy. Motion by Jimmy, second by Betty. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Let me ask, any reports from council members from any of your committees before we entertain a motion for a closed session? Betty?
No.
Michelle?
Homeless Coordinating Council did meet.
Things are moving forward pretty good there.
Obviously, we talked about Carol and her trip.
She finished, right?
Right, she made it.
I think she was meeting with Senator Hatch yesterday.
Yeah.
I think.
So everybody was quite happy about that.
She did meet at the Lee office as well.
Excellent, glad.
She'll probably report on that. One of the things, one of the preliminary things that she heard in a lot of the shelters she visited was mental health help, which we kind of have been hearing a lot and so we kind of know. But anyways, I'll let her tell you about her trip, because I'm sure there's all kinds of good stories. And you know Carol, it'll be good. Other than that, things are moving forward pretty good. We had a pretty good, productive meeting again. Things are moving forward with different groups. They coordinated a lot of efforts on certain chronic homeless. There is some concern about some of the population from our neighbors in Hildale and Colorado City and what we can do there. But those things will be ongoing for those people who may leave and be homeless or some of the people that are without a home there, so. And they tend to come to our city and we want to be, there's some things going on to make sure we help them. So other than that, I think that's about all the boards I went to since our last meeting.
Gil?
Flood control did not meet, but they will be meeting this next Tuesday.
That's right. What time, is that 5?
5 o'clock.
And I do have one announcement. The 23rd and 24th of October will be the art museum tour. And it's really exciting, I mean, they have, it's very fun to go see beautiful art that's hanging in homes all around St. George, so.
Good. That's the, so is that the home tour? Okay. Will you make sure we get that? Maybe a reminder through email or something and Christina can probably help. I might just also mention a couple of things. We get through the marathon, as you know, this weekend and then it's this Huntsman World Senior Games. And that kicks off Tuesday night officially. So that will cause some problems with flood control board for me. So, because I'll have to be there at 5 for the dinner. Anyway, we can coordinate with those things, but you should have all received information on that. If you're able to go, great. Okay. 7, I think, or something like that. Dinner's at 5. And then there's the, you know, whatever, celebration. Okay, very good. And then, you know, after that, you know, in fact, in the middle of that, on the 10th, remember, council, is that United Way Live, let's see, Live United or United Live? Sorry, that's it. It's the big thing at Town Square we approved a long time ago with all kinds of music groups and including Howard Jones, who will be singing that night. Some of us remember Howard Jones. And so, huh? Not so much. Yeah, yeah. But kind of, kind of easy listening rock, so. Michelle, you know Howard Jones, don't you? Oh my gosh.
I don't even.
You do, right, Sean? Okay, alright. I'm just making sure I'm not, like, saying it wrong or something.
Well, country and rock together, crock.
He was just too quiet for me.
Yeah, he is kind of quiet, yeah.
I don't, I don't remember him.
So anyway, but there's a lot of great local groups and individuals. I hear Jimmy Hughes is going to sing, so, just kidding. But you could if you want. Anyway, that's the 10th. That is a massive fundraiser for all the different, in fact, there's about 17 different not-for-profits who will benefit from that, so. Big deal.
What time is that?
It's basically all day, but the real kicker is that kind of the headliners are starting at about 6 that night. Town Square, we'll get you some more information on that, too.
And George Street Fest is Friday night.
This Friday night, starting at 6.
Oktoberfest.
Oktoberfest, there will be root beer and there will be beer in the, beer and wine garden.
You can buy a mug for your root beer.
You can buy a mug.
You can buy a mug for your beer.
So we will be, you know.
Very diverse.
Very diverse and lots of, lots of good stuff. And again, you know, all kinds of other things going on. I went last night to Tuacon out in our sister city of Ivans. Holy cow, if you haven't seen When You Wish, you need to go see it before the end. Holy cow, it was incredible.
When does it end?
I think later this month. So they've just changed, they start at 7:30 in the evening now. And this is the interesting thing, I just have to tell you guys this. I, the place was full on a Wednesday night, September 30. I did not recognize a single person. What does that tell you? There were people there, probably about half, who raised their hands when they asked, "How many of you is this the first time being here?" At least half. They were oohing and aahing over everything as the horses ran by, as the flood, the stage was flooded for one number. It was, it was just really fun to be there, so. Anyway, you remember when they came to talk to us and they talked about the percentage that were from out of town? I think they're right. It's a high percentage, so.
And there are buses from California.
Yes.
So they're bringing.
There was a church group.
Trailway buses.
Yeah, there was a church group there from out of state and they were just amazed, you know. I don't know where they were from, but they were from out of state. So I just had to say that, because I think it's, that, what they've told us and what we've kind of counted on is that they are bringing in tourism dollars and I think that's true, so.
And Mayor, I think they explained too that When You Wish was a concept that Disney was putting together and they wanted to find someone who could do it, kind of a, again, a guinea pig sort of idea, to see if it would be successful. And who did they choose?
Tuacon, yep. They said that last night and they asked us all to clap and scream loudly for the things we liked and not so much for the things we didn't. It was really cute. And, you know, almost everything, it was just, you know, these huge eruptions of applause. Yeah, really neat. Little bit of Tarzan and Pocahontas and Mary Poppins and.
Newsies?
Newsies. And let's see, all the, you know, Little Mermaid and I don't know what else I'm missing. Beauty and the Beast, of course. That was really good. So anyway, if you can, go see it. They have deals occasionally on the tickets. I would just call your attention, council, to the BLM.
RMP.
RMP. Resource Management Plan. Just, I would just encourage everyone, not just the council, to learn what you can about it. It's about a 1,200-page document. I can't begin to read that much in my spare time, but I'm reading some summaries and learning what I can. The county has put out some good information. It's on their website at washco.utah.gov. I think I will be coming to you with a suggestion that we send a letter to the BLM regarding our position on this and we'll come to you here soon. The, at least currently, the opportunity for input ends on October 15. We've asked for 90 days more. Don't know if we'll get it or not. But it is potentially very harmful, from what I can tell and from what the county's assistant attorney has told me, in terms of water, power and transportation, overall development, but even just continuing what we have now. We could potentially lose 10% of our water that we own within just north of us here. And I just think that's untenable. And so, anyway, I hope that we can get more educated as quickly as we can on it. If we have more time, great. And I know that we have our federal elected officials who are aware of this. But I think we need to be, you know, prepared and granted, everyone's entitled to their opinion. But I think this is frankly, not only anti-growth, I think it's anti-human. And I'm just going to state that on the record. I don't appreciate the way in which this was done.
It's anti-procedural when you have the Congress of the United States granting rights and then you have an agency or in this case, a bureau saying, "We don't like the way Congress voted," or "We'll reinterpret that."
Or just ignore it.
Or ignore it.
Just completely ignore the agreements that were made previously.
Yeah.
Ivans, the city of Ivans, is almost, to my count, every single resident has commented. Oh Leeds, yeah.
Leeds, yeah.
Leeds. And I think that's exciting, that just, they got the word out and everyone has, because I've received them.
Very good. There's an easy way, you know, to respond and I think it's up to each one of us to decide if we want to and how we want to. But I want people to know, there's an easy way to do it and the easiest right now, and maybe we should have this kind of a link on our website as well, but washco.utah.gov. It's right there on the right side of the front page.
It'll take you about a minute and a half.
That's right, doesn't take long.
And I would, like you say, Mayor, I would like to see us respond as a council, too, if we're in agreement with the letter as well.
Are we in agreement on that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We will, we will draft something and bring it to you and do so in the next, you know, week or so. Okay.
I think that's another thing that's kind of unsettling, is absolutely no input from, you know, the elected officials and/or all the other people that have been trying to plan for transportation issues and everything else. I mean, we sit on the Dixie MPO board and we're planning out transportation issues for 40 and 50 years.
The Water District?
Yep.
Same thing.
And we take that seriously and we take into account environmental concerns and all those things. And it's pretty much, that doesn't matter. To me, that's just a little bit unacceptable.
The original HCP staring committee, it was just an accepted, understood thing that there would be a northern corridor in this county, so.
Well, and in the 2009 Omnibus Land Act, that we, you know, worked very hard and like you've said to me privately, Betty, gave up some things, gave up a lot, but we worked hard. Senator Math, excuse me, Bennett and Congressman Matheson worked hard on it. Our county commissioners worked hard on it. And even some of the things that are required in that legislation, that law, are not being followed, have not been followed in this, including what you just said, a preferred alternative that includes a northern transportation route, a northern corridor going east and west. It's not there in their preferred alternative. And I just think it's unacceptable. So anyway, we'll work on that. Just want to be upfront and if people feel differently, they can let us know and they can also let the BLM know one way or the other. Anything else to report from committees? I think that's about it. So I would entertain a motion to go into a closed session for purposes of property sale. Anything else, Sean? Okay.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Gil with a second by Jimmy. All in favor, starting with Betty, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.